We'll call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Community District 128 for Monday, February 24th. If I could ask everybody to stand, please, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Charmichael.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Yes.
Kevin Huber. Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so we know Kevin Huber absent this evening. All right, our agenda, we will open it up for public comment. I'd ask anybody that wants to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We will have student recognition and a presentation on 504 Accommodation Supports in District 128. Then we'll have brief updates from the student school board reps. Superintendent's report will approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier in the month, and brief updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. SEDO?
Nothing.
Okay. And IASB?
Just a brief.
Okay, just brief there, and that should do it. Anything else? Okay, I'll open up anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight. Seeing none, okay. Then we will open up student recognition.
Good evening. I'd love to speak. We have a couple great recognitions tonight from programs that are historically successful with a couple different coaches. One coach been here for a long time since the program started in boys bowling, Ron Long, who's finishing up his career with a great last run, last hurrah, ending up downstate, and then Coach JJ Block, who's just in her second year here, but all sorts of success just in two short years. So I will start, I think I'll bring up Coach Long. Ron Long, like I said, probably for a lot of years was here just about every year and had a little bit of a stretch, but this year they made it down. And I will tell you from personal experience, my kid graduated last year and bowled three years under his leadership and his assistant coaches, their leadership, and had a great experience. So as a parent, I know that that program has been doing great things for a long time. So Ron, we're gonna miss you. Thanks for all you've done. Why don't you come up here and talk about these guys?
Okay. I'd like to thank the school board for all the, you know, great support we've had throughout my seventeen years as the bowling coach here. Me and Bill Spidener started the program, and I am getting out, I guess you'd call it, but Bill's gonna continue, I think, and we're in good shape for the future. Bill Monroe is one of my assistants, he's here tonight. Craig Franco is the other assistant, and he's not here, but both of them helped tremendously. They're volunteer coaches, and we couldn't do it without them. They do a lot of the things that are needed to be done. You know, we have nineteen players on the team, and it takes a lot of coaching, so I really appreciate all their efforts. We have a great parent support staff over here. The parents come to our meets and help me run them, and we've had great success with that. In my seventeen years, we were the first team in this school's history to get an IHSA state trophy. We received third place way back when, 2005. In 2011, we got second place in the state. In 2012, we repeated and got second place again. So second's great, and we've had a good time doing that. This year, we went down there again, pretty much Victor asked it for me out there.
Who's celebrating?
This is happening before. Run.
Yes.
I'll stick it out. No, we've had great success this year. We started out, it's kinda ironic the way we started, because we had a playing field invitational, which was about, I don't know how many teams there were, at least twenty-six teams or more, and we got second place in that particular invite right off the bat, and who beat us was St. Charles East. St. Charles East is the team we lost to at state. So it's kinda one of those things, you know? We knew they were gonna be really tough all year long. They, we were within two games of winning state, and they came out, came up with a state record game of a 1279, which is like unheard of. I mean, so it was like, what do you do? You know, one of the kids had a perfect game for them, and the other kid had a 298 in the same time. So our kids battled like crazy, never gave up. It was just so much fun to see them and be with them this year, and I have, I'm gonna introduce them now. Three of them are seniors that I'll miss dearly. Been varsity players for all four years, those guys. All four years, they've been on varsity team. Jacob Gates, my captain. Alex Cabalas, one of our seniors. Brandon Cervantes, my other teammate. Next in line would be other starters, Nick Schwinn. Brendan Healy. And Noah Felicin. Those are the seven, they headed down to state. Noah Seaver was also listed on that team, he's our eighth player, not here tonight. But these guys put in quite an effort all year long. They, all five of the starters were in the top fifty at the state this year. All five, it's incredible. So I'm very proud of them, very proud of this school. I think the administration has been always so supportive also, and we're in really good hands for the future. We got such a strong belief system in this bowling program that it's never gonna die. It's always gonna go on, and you're gonna just keep coming, and you're gonna see great success in the future, too. So I appreciate you having us here tonight, and that's it.
Let's get a picture.
Take your time, we're not in any hurry.
Yes, set everything off.
Good job, guys. Good job. Congratulations. All right, then, like I said, Coach Andrea Block, she's relatively new, but still super successful in the two years that she's been coaching. She's been here both years with all sorts of success, and the two athletes that she brings are no rookies to this place either. Ally's been here for four years, three with swimming, one with gymnastics, right? In case you've been here for three, this is the third. So these athletes are highly recognized and tremendous at what they do, so Coach Block, come on up and talk a little bit.
I'm gonna need these, too. I gave away my age. Okay. Good evening. I'd like to thank the school board for recognizing our girls swim and dive team, and in particular, these two standouts, diver Ally Landis and swimmer Casey Cafrey. Taking time to recognize our outstanding all-state athletes means so much to our girls, their parents, and our coaches. Their share, our undefeated team, won its second consecutive conference championship and had nine automatic all-conference athletes. The Cougars took third at the Tough Sectionals, which included newcomers, New Trir and Evanston. The deep competition, however, proved fortuitous. We qualified two relays, two divers, and six swims. Ally's sixth place finish coupled with Casey's seventh in the 500 and ninth in the 200 free catapulted Vernon Hills to seventeenth place at state. Remarkable for a small school with just two state finalists. Both girls left their mark on the Vernon Hills varsity record board also, with two new diving records this year for Ally and two new records for Casey in the 200 and the 500. In addition to being record-setting athletes, Ally and Casey are outstanding students, supportive teammates, and wonderful daughters. Hats off to Michelle and Chad Landis and Doreen Lumke for raising such wonderful, well-rounded young women. It has been an honor and a privilege to coach Ally and Casey and all the Cougars. I love my school and I love my team. A special thank you to John and Brian for their tremendous support. Standing with you at deck was quite impactful and very appreciated. Lastly, to Ally, I L I, I O L?
I L I.
I do it wrong every time. Good luck next year as you take your diving career to the next level at the University of Illinois-Champaign. They are lucky to have you. And to Casey, thank goodness you are just a junior. We have another, we have another year with you before you get to pick the college of your choice to share your swimming gifts. Thank you very much for recognizing us, we really appreciate it.
First of all, the school board wants me to invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting. I'll tell you a secret, it's okay to slide out. We'd always love to have you stay at the meeting. But on behalf of the board and the district and building administrations and everyone in District 128, our favorite thing to do is to celebrate student success, and we are just so proud of all of you. But we also know that the students that we've recognized tonight didn't get where they are at without parents and family and friends. So we'd like to take a minute and have all the parents stand up and family and friends that are here. Come on, come on. Don't put down. So tell me a little story that you have done with your children and in the context of a team for other people's kids as well. We greatly appreciate you, and now if you want to slide out.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Next, 504 accommodations.
Is that on? Are you tired of me yet? Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kelly Hartwig. I'm the Director of Special Services for District 128, and I'd like to introduce to you tonight the stars of the conversation, Claire DeBella and Kristen Miller, who are our Student Needs Specialists at both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills respectively. We're here to talk about 504 coordination and supports, but I think it's important to start off by helping you to understand why we call Kristen and Claire our Student Needs Specialists, or SNSs, I'll probably refer them to, refer to them as, because I love acronyms. They wear many hats beyond 504. Our Student Needs Specialists help our LSTs review student needs, help our flex teams support students who are at risk for needing more additional supports or returning from extended homebound periods. They sit on building committees for students that consider different support variations and interventions, and they help catch the kids who previously were more likely to slip through the cracks. They help the SST and SRT process in looking at special ed considerations for eligibility. They communicate about standardized testing accommodation with students, families, and staff, and they lead a lot of professional development in various ways throughout the year for our staff. But tonight, we'll focus on one specific area of what they do, the 504 coordination role. Let me do a little bit of legal review. I know this is the exciting part. It is, it's exciting. What is Section 504? Where does it come from? The Rehabilitation Act of 1973 was a civil rights law that was generally designed to promote fairness and equal treatment for all people. Section 504 of the Rehab Act, more specifically, intended to level the playing field for people with disabilities in all settings, including work, public access, and communication. Very specific to Section 504 is Subpart D, which afforded rights to specific students in pre-K to high school public education systems who have disabilities. The Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 was meant to inflate or continue the template that was started with the Rehab Act of 1973. But the way it was written, the language actually resulted in an interpretation by the courts that narrowed the definition of disability, what was or wasn't a disability, and thus limited the rights of people with disabilities. So in 2008, the Americans with Disabilities Amendments Act was passed, which broadened the definition of a disability. The ADA is, or the newest version of that Rehab Act, if you will, clarified protections for people with disabilities. Section 504, Subpart D, is specific to students who are in schools, and a subsection of 504 is IDEA, or the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and that identifies students who fall into very specific categories of eligibility to receive special education services. Students under IDEA have needs that remove them from their peers in the general education setting and require explicit, separate, individualized instruction. Students who access 504 accommodations require planning on the part of public schools to create equal access to opportunities across their experience. An interesting side note of this is that federal law does not actually require 504 accommodation plans to be written. However, attorneys cringe when they hear people like me say that, because they know that if accommodations are not in a plan and in print, they're more easy to accidentally not provide. So a common practice for school districts has been to create Section 504 accommodation plans that tend to mirror what an IEP for a student with special education services provides to a degree. These accommodation plans support students in engaging in learning and extracurricular How many students in District 128 have 504 accommodation plans? As you can see, over time, this number has grown. In the 14-15 school year, about 4% of Vernon Hills population were served with 504 accommodation plans, and about 3% of the population at Libertyville had one. In the 15-16 school year, though, you can see our numbers basically jumped to double. 7% of our students at Vernon Hills were accessing supports under 504, and 5% of those at Libertyville were receiving supports. These numbers continue to steadily grow throughout the years, and at this point in time, we average about eight student, I lied, 8% of our students in both buildings who access supports through the 504 process. I will tell you, though I'm not gonna give away secrets, we are surrounded by many districts whose numbers are larger than ours, so we're in a stable place. And if you look at statistics across the nation, about 10% of people in America have disabilities. So 8% is hovering right around what we would expect. The number of students the number of students accessing 504 accommodation plans is increasing everywhere across the United States. Between 2008 and '09 and the 2015-16 school year, the number of K through 12 students across the USA accessing 504 plans doubled according to an analysis of federal data, and we don't have yet an updated federal report on students accessing 504 plans right now. It's really hard, though, to pin down national numbers, because 504 is not monitored for compliance the way the IDEA is. There is no funding source you see for students who access 504 accommodation plans, and when there's no funding source, the federal government has a less tighter lens on requesting numbers and data. But let's take a look at a few variables that we know have increased numbers in Illinois. The Americans with Disabilities Amendments Act of 2008, which was implemented in 2009, that I mentioned before, really did two things that spiked an uptick in the eligibility for students with 504 plans. First, it broadened the definition of the term disability, which resulted in more people being ruled into having disabilities instead of being ruled out of having a disability. The definition broadened. The second element of the Americans with Disabilities Amendments Act, I almost slipped into my acronym world, that had a big impact, though, was that this amendment act clarified that the intent of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 was to prevent discrimination of a person with a disability. So the emphasis on discriminating against someone known to have or thought to have a disability resulted in more students being found eligible under 504. Known to have or suspected to have. Broad. We consider, when we consider eligibility for students, which you'll hear more about in a moment, we must consider whether they're known or suspected of having a disability. Families do not need to prove it, per se. Another element that impacted the uptick in numbers is that in 2012, the federal government released a Dear Colleague letter from the Office of Civil Rights that provided new guidance that again broadened who should be found eligible and what services and supports should be provided for students with known or perceived disabilities. Another societal impact on the uptick in the numbers has been in screenings. Younger kiddos, I have a one-year-old almost at home now, and I'm noticing in every appointment that we have, the doctor conducts a screening. So there've been an uptick in the types of pediatric screenings that are being provided, not only for the little guys, but even for the 14-year-old that we had in freshman year this year, when he went in for his high school physical. There are also stronger contacts by local departments of health. Again, I have almost a one-year-old, and he's already gone through two early hood childhood screenings offered by my local DuPage Public Health County services. And also, public school systems for early intervention are reaching out to families at a rate that they didn't 10 years ago. The biggest area, though, in most recent time has been the uptick in state laws. As of July 1st, 2018, three laws went into effect for the 18-19 school year related to social-emotional screening, emotional intelligence task force creation, and mental health awareness board policies and procedures for training that were required for all educators. In the 1920s school year, at least one mental health-related law was put into effect, obligating schools to inform families that students who do not qualify for special education services but who have mental health needs may qualify for services under 504. Currently, there are at least two more bills that I know of that are actively in discussion today and that are likely to be ratified, that would require school districts to link students, would require us to link students with known mental health needs to mental health resources in the community, and then another one, hopefully, would consider some funding for those community-based partnerships. As I mentioned, though, there's currently little to no funding by the state or federal levels to implement most of these mandates, and I've just described to you six laws that are likely to be put into effect or have been put into effect in just the last three years alone related to 504 accommodation provisions. It's important to also note that most legal cases that move to the court system out of hearing officer level or Office of Civil Right complaint level are tied to the provision of and access to appropriate and reasonable accommodations under Section 504. Because many of the, because of the unfunded mandates attached to the 504 expectations, many school districts lack the staffing to support the needs to truly meet these students where they're at, in addition to providing staff guidance and monitoring to ensure compliance. Tonight, as you hear Kristen and Claire share information about our students in District 128, who go through the evaluation process for and then are provided access to 504 accommodation plans, please remember a few things. First, Kristen and Claire were hired in the 2016-17 school year to specifically coordinate and monitor the provision of 504 accommodation for students, in addition to the other areas that I described of their roles. Since case managers are school counselors in our district, as they are in most districts, and since there is typically no daily contact for supervision or check-ins by those case managers, the SNSs not only ensure that we stay compliant with federal requirements for updating plans and support case managers and teachers in ensuring that accommodations are being afforded to students. Their positions were cutting-edge at the time, and this was only in 2015 when we began talking about the need for them. I could only find one area-school district that was a unit district that have a 504 coordinator, specifically hired person for that role at that time. Today, though, without fail, I receive at least a couple contacts a year asking for our job description of their role and how we organize what they do and how we support them in supporting students. So 504 coordinators are growing. You're on the cutting-edge board, congratulations. Kristen and Claire work every day with a rulebook that really is not written beyond broad requirements under federal law, and which, remember, though, cannot be violated by schools, because otherwise they result in court cases violating the ADA rights of students in 504. Kristen and Claire are really the catch-all for all students who may have easily fallen between the cracks, as I said before. They are an integral part of the child find monitoring and identification process for the buildings, and they provide guidance and support to teachers who strive to ensure successful learning experiences for all students. And good news, I'm gonna turn it over to them now.
Societally, we know that there are many reasons why there's been increases in the number of 504 plans, but let's take a look at our trends in District 128. One of the first sources of increases for us comes from our feeder districts. We have seen a dramatic increase in the past five years of students coming from middle school to high school with 504 plans already in place. Looking at the chart, you can tell Vernon Hills is in the blue, Libertyville is in the orange, and then our district combined numbers are in the gray. So this upcoming year, we're seeing the most dramatic increase since Kristen and I started our roles in District 128. In looking at our data, we wanted to see if there was an increase in numbers of students with 504 plans coming from the initial evaluations that we were completing at the high school level. Again, looking at the chart, Vernon Hills is in blue and Libertyville's in orange and our combined numbers are in gray. This data tells us that our initial evaluations are remaining fairly consistent throughout the last three years, and that we are on track for certainly to be at the same level this current school year. Okay, so you may be wondering, what goes into the evaluation process to determine how a student is eligible for a Section 504 plan? And really, there are three questions that we ask, or three eligibility criteria that a student must meet in order to qualify. So the first criteria is that a student must have or be suspected of having a physical or mental impairment, as Kelly talked about. And again, that's defined pretty broadly by the law, and impairments can include anything from mental health disorders to medical diagnoses. And I'll show a few more examples in a little bit. But looking onto criteria two, once we know that a student has an impairment, we are asking, is that student substantially limited in one or more major life activities in the school setting? So major life activities, there's also a number of these that are included in the law, but it can include things like breathing, walking, concentrating, thinking, learning, reading. Again, there's a variety of things that are considered major life activities. But the substantial limitation part is not defined by the law. So that becomes the 504 team's job and duty to kinda consider how the student is limited and if they are, if that limitation is substantially limiting a major life activity. So, and for example, a student who may have a mild sensitivity to bee stings would probably not qualify for a Section 504 plan. However, a student that has a life-threatening allergy would However, a student that has a life-threatening allergy would qualify for a 504 plan or could qualify for a 504 plan because the major life activity that's impacted in that case is obviously breathing. So criteria two is essentially telling us that a student that has an impairment does not automatically qualify for a 504 plan. We're looking at that restriction of a major life activity compared to the average peer, compared to the average person. And in the school setting, usually that impairment limits a student's ability to access instruction or produce work. And the third criteria is, once we've established criteria one and two, we're then asking, is the student limited to a degree that warrants formal accommodations in order for that student to have equal access to their learning environment? So do we need to provide accommodations so that that playing field is level and the student with the impairment or disability has the same opportunities as their non-disabled peers? So as I said, I was going to go back to some more examples of physical or mental impairments. This list is not exhaustive, but it just kind of shows you the breadth of impairments or diagnoses that can be considered as impairments under the law. The other piece of this criteria is that students need to have that impairment or that impairment is anticipated to last six months in duration or more. So that's why we wouldn't usually see students that have like a broken arm or a concussion as eligible for a 504 plan. Those students would typically receive temporary medical accommodations as outlined by their physician, which we can provide in the school setting. Of course, there are cases where post-concussion syndrome may last, it's getting close to the six months, or it's lasting longer than six months in duration. And in those cases, we would look to evaluate the student. Okay, so we also want to give you an idea of what impairments we're finding as most common in our D128 population. So this chart outlines the prevalence of impairments as a percentage of all diagnoses or all impairments for students who currently qualify for 504 plans in our district. So as you can see, the largest category is behavior disorders such as ADHD. They represent about 39% of the population of, for students that have 504 plans. And the reason why we consider ADHD as a behavior disorder, we know that not all students with ADHD may have overt or externalizing behaviors, but it's just how the American Psychological Association defines ADHD as a behavior disorder. So I didn't want that to throw anyone. The next prevalent, the next most prevalent is mood disorders such as anxiety and depression, and that accounts for about 26% of our impairments. And then after that, we have a variety of medical conditions, all different, that make up that 16%. I do want to note, one thing that Claire and I found when we were looking through our data in the mood disorders category is we looked at our initial evaluations and we found in the last school year, even though it'll, overall, it's 26%, 52% of our initial evaluations last year were for students that had identified mood disorders. And in the current school year so far, that, they make up 50% of our 30 evaluations that we've conducted. So definitely a difference. We also wanted to look at, what are the changes over time? And we've only started collecting this data in the last two years, but last year's data is in blue and this year's data is in red. So some of the initial trends that we're seeing are an increase in the diagnoses of medical conditions for students that qualify for 504 plans and an increase in mood disorders. And we are seeing a decrease in the behavior disorder category, or typically students that have ADHD. So again, it's only the last year and this year that's included in this sample, but we intend to continue collecting this data to see if those trends hold true over time or to see what else is happening in our district over the long term.
Once impairments have been identified and it's determined that one or more major life activities have been substantially limited, the team considers whether the student may require accommodations or services to create access to learning and/or their environment. So we create accommodation plans based on students' needs coming from the data from evaluations that we conduct. We do not consider what the student will benefit from, but rather what do they need based on how their disability substantially limits them. There are a lot of students who would benefit from having extended time on tests, for example, whether or not they had a disability. Instead, we must consider whether the student is substantially limited or at a disadvantage by not having the specific accommodations due to their mental or physical impairment. So we collect teacher feedback to help us determine what teachers are seeing in the classroom and if students are already receiving some kind of informalized support. Kristin and I also conduct observations in the classroom to determine students' on-task or off-task behaviors and compare that to peers to determine if there's a discrepancy. We also collect test logs where we're looking at time completion on tests. We get a lot of requests for extended time, and so that's one way that we collect data to ensure that students, if they're using or requesting that accommodation, that that's something that we're keeping track of. We also look at input from school nurse, social worker, and counselor, looking at frequency of office visits, as well as taking into account parent and the student self-report. Accommodations are fluid in that what a student may need may change over time or that they may be different based on the setting that they're in. So what a student may require to accommodate his impairment in elementary school may be more or less than what he needs in middle school and the same for high school. While it is implicit that a long-term impairment means that a student's needs for accommodation will never fully go away, it is important that students and families understand that once they leave the high school, their 504 accommodation plan that affords entitlements while in the K-12 school system will no longer be in place. And at the university or work, their rights will now be protected under the Americans with Disabilities Act, which affords reasonable accommodations instead of tailored entitlements. For example, if you look at the first two boxes on this chart, where a student's team in middle school may say that she requires having her test read to her by a human to allow for repeated readings and to adjust the pace of the reading, in the high school, we would try to change that accommodation to the use of a text-to-speech software program or app, because in a college, a human reader would not be considered a reasonable accommodation, but a reading software program would be. Because we know that individualized accommodations become much less tailored and may not even be allowed in a college setting, we work with our families and students to consider scaffolding accommodations in a way that encourages independent advocacy and the use of the accommodations when needed throughout their time in school. Working with students to create 504 accommodation plans that are adjusted over the years, that foster self-awareness and self-advocacy, and that are developmentally appropriate, gives students his or her best chance at being successful in a post-secondary world. Beyond addressing the needs of students through the evaluation process and through the creation of 504 plans, there are many other ways throughout the year that Kristin and I support all stakeholders involved with the students that have 504 plans. So during a student's eighth-grade year, we host a parent night for incoming freshmen with 504 plans. We have articulation meetings in the fall with the middle school staff. We review course selections and have transition meetings with families during the spring of their eighth-grade year, all to help the students with 504 plans have a successful transition to District 128. Once they are at LHS or VHHS, we hold freshman year annual review meetings. During their sophomore year, we again conduct reevaluations to determine their need or eligibility for the Section 504 plan. And then during the students' junior and senior years, we discuss and consult with families, with school staff, whether any updates to the plan are needed.
When I'm asked by colleagues what I love about District 128, I feel so blessed that so many immediate answers come to mind. In the case of this evening, I am grateful for a district that values the mission of supporting the learning journey of all students as they move toward post-secondary pursuits. The role of the Student Need Specialist does exactly that for many students in unique and out-of-the-box ways, but in the case of supporting our students with 504 accommodation plans, they not only support a process that fosters resilience, nimbleness, and awareness in our students, but also the staff and families who work with them. Thank you for your support and for your time this evening.
Actually, that was really well done. Most of my questions were answered on the next slide. So that was great. But I guess, can you just give us, give us a sample or an example? You said somebody, if they have, you know, a severe allergy, might have a 504 plan. What would that 504 plan look like?
It definitely depends on the student. We want to individualize plans for them, but typically, I'm trying to think of one of our examples of 504.
Or any example we have. I just, you know, I don't have any personal experience with it, so I don't have an idea what kind of accommodations we make for those kinds of things.
Sure. Well, I think, I mean, a big piece is, like, when students go on field trips, there's different staff involved than may, and there's different food involved.
Okay.
If it's a food allergy, we always want to make sure that there's an awareness for all the supervisors who are on board and that there is food that the student can eat on that trip. You know, typically at the high school level, students who have a life-threatening allergy will self-carry their EpiPens. But there's usually like an emergency plan that goes into place that involves the school nurse and administering the EpiPen, calling the parents, calling 911 if that, if the EpiPen is administered. I think just for classroom teachers, I know some classrooms have different, like, food events in the classroom, some of our languages classes. And so just making sure that the student knows when those days are coming up and they have a reasonable alternative and there isn't, like, food tasting required as a part of, you know, doing some kind of language thing. Just make sure we're not discriminating against them, basically.
And where does the input for that plan come from? In other words, you know, on the far extreme, we screen everybody and we decide who needs a plan versus every parent comes in and says, hey, I think my student needs a plan because...
Yeah, so we're, for a medical 504, we're looking at feedback from the physician, feedback from the parents, and also from the student, like, what accommodations are going to make them feel comfortable in the school environment? Sometime, we do get feedback from teachers as well, not so much for, like, a significant allergy, but for other medical needs, like if a student has type 1 diabetes, you know, teachers may see specific things in the classroom, like if they're, like, zoning out or if they're having trouble completing tests, if they need to take a lot of breaks in order to check and correct their blood sugar levels. So we get feedback from a variety of sources.
All right, one last one. But I was really intrigued by the whole idea of sort of stepping it down by the time they get out of high school and into college, because a lot of those same accommodations aren't made. I mean, I'm assuming we're kind of trying to wean them off some things and getting ready for that freshman year when you're not home anymore, and a lot of those accommodations seem to go away.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, one example is, and again, it's different depending on the student. Some students continue to need more supportive plans throughout their high school career, but as students grow and develop, they learn compensatory strategies, new skills, and it kind of eliminates the need for some of the accommodations. So for example, a student with ADHD may come in with an accommodation of needing, like, frequent teacher check-ins on their progress on their work or checking for understanding of directions. And what I've seen with some of our students is that, over time, they start to say, well, I just feel comfortable asking if I have a question. I don't need them to check in with me all the time. And again, that's dependent on the student, but we find, we really try to emphasize self-advocacy as a skill to develop and, because of that, that does eliminate the need for some accommodations over time.
So thanks. That was, I thought that was really well done. Very thorough, very comprehensive, and honestly, I'm not sure I had as good a picture of all the things that, like, that are going on behind the scenes, so I appreciate you guys coming and talking to us about it.
Thank you.
All right. Student School Board reports. Who'd like to go first?
Sure, I can go. Okay. Each year juniors, each year juniors in US history classes participate in the annual history fair where they choose a topic to create a final product, such as an essay, museum display, website, and more creative ideas that students have presented. This month, the juniors presented these projects and displayed them in the library for other students.
Hang on one second. We've got, this is our night.
Is it, oh.
There you go.
Okay. Is it working? Okay.
There you go.
Should I start over or is it...
Yeah, sure.
Should I start over?
Okay.
We don't want you to be missed on TV.
Each year juniors in US history classes participate in the annual history fair where they choose a topic to create a final product on, such as an essay, museum display, website, and more creative ideas that students have presented in the past. This month, juniors presented these projects and displayed them in the library for other students and staff to see and learn more about the chosen topics. Our environmental club, BH2O, is planning a zero-waste day across school. Club members will, with the help of teacher sponsors, will be publicizing soon on how all students can participate. We are excited to hear more about this. Congratulations to this month's Cougar Class Act Award recipients who were recognized on February 21st. Each month, it is an outstanding group of students who have worked hard to make our school community a better place for everyone. Journalism classes are currently working on Production Week for the March issue of The Scratching Post. The issue will feature stories about mental health, caffeine addictions in teenagers, and the lack of student spirit in sports attendance. This will be the third issue of the year, and the senior issue will be soon to follow. Our Turnabout Spirit Week included many fun activities for the students and staff. For Rock and Roll Day, students got to roller skate in the foyer and could do so during their lunch and study halls. The assembly on Friday was a white-out and featured black light and glow-in-the-dark. The senior class was happy to win the first-ever Spirit Champs flag. Students from each class competed in games, then the court was announced. We were proud of our turnabout King and Queen, Bjorn Benjamin and CeCe Schumacher. The dance on Saturday featured a silent disco as well as a DJ. It was lots of fun, and we look forward to our final high school dance, prom, in April. Vernon Hills students, along with students from Libertyville and Barrington High Schools, recently spent the day at a leadership and team-building event called Snowball. The students participated in fun games and activities, learning valuable team skills, and drank lots of delicious hot chocolate. It was a very fun day for all who participated. Congratulations to boys basketball coach McCarty for earning his 200th career win after the team beat Maine East late in January. Coach McCarty has been coaching for 17 years. Another congratulations to wrestling coach Misselli for earning his 300th career win. Amazing accomplishments by both coaches. The boys bowling team placed second in their IHSA state tournament. It was amazing season for the team with many victories along the way. Another congratulations goes out to the girls cheerleading team, who placed ninth at the IHSA state finals. It was a wonderful finish to the season for them as well. Additionally, great job to Kevin Schumacher, who has qualified for the IHSA state finals for diving. We wish him luck as he competes next weekend. Vernon Hills recently hosted the first annual Big Cat Throwoff against Libertyville. It was a fun crosstown rivalry event, and the Cougars came out on top. Finally, a huge congratulations goes out to senior Josh Lu for being selected to the 2020 IHSA All-State Academic Team. He is one of only 26 people in the state to be recognized for excelling in academics while also participating in multiple sports activities. It is a well-deserved honor for Josh, who competes in basketball and baseball while also being a stellar student.
And from Libertyville, we're starting off the Turnabout. So last week was a spirit week leading up to Turnabout on Saturday. Each day had a theme announced by student council, including themes like Tie-Dye Thursday and Future Friday. The Turnabout Assembly was on Thursday, and the turnout was great. Students were thrilled to see cameo video appearances from familiar celebrities Phil Lewis and David Henry, and the Nickelodeon-inspired Sliming was a huge hit. This all led up to the dance on Saturday. While we don't have the exact numbers from each grades, or each grades breakdown turnout for the event, the gym was packed and the energy levels were high. The silent disco was once again a student favorite. Beyond the dance itself, a number of people and groups were involved in making the night go smoothly. Teachers manned the check-in, the ticket lines, and the water station, and parents helped with the code check. So we want to give a huge thank you to them and to all the security and custodial staff who worked to make this event possible for us. The LHS computer science teacher, Mrs. Elmore, also brought attention to the coding marathon event hosted by Stevenson High School over the weekend, in which participants worked to code anything that they wanted for 24 hours straight. Participants could sleep or take a nap, but many, especially for students from LHS, did not choose to do so. So four LHS students came in fifth place at the end of the evening, or at the end of the marathon, and they coded for 24 hours straight, which is a very impressive feat. Junior Becca Laduckie said, "It was super fun time to meet other people who enjoyed coding and at the same time be super competitive with others to try to impress the judges." We would like to give a huge thank you to all those who participated, as well as to the staff members who helped monitor the event to make...
as well as to the staff members who helped monitor the event to make it possible. Best Buddies hosted its annual Best Buddies Carnival on February 15th. It's a huge event, complete with bouncy houses, games, pizza, a DJ, and so much more. The club's largest, it's the club's largest fundraiser, and it was a huge success this year. Club co-president Maggie Hutchins stated, "Each year, Best Buddies invites everyone from the Lake County community to attend the carnival and love seeing so many new smiling faces." Additionally, many LHS teachers attend the carnival with their families, which is always a blast. Best Buddies is so grateful for the support of the community. So the LHS math team placed first at the North Suburban Mathematics League, and they were led by huge successes from the junior and sophomore groups. The whole team had a blast hosting the tournament, and they're so excited about the win. The academic decathlon team placed first at the regional tournament, with Ethan Landry being the team's highest-scoring member. Tatsukas Hunger also raised money for Feed My Starving Children this turnabout season through Penny Wars. Students used coins to vote for Dr. K, Lynn, Diane, and Mr. Woods, and they were all slimmed at the turnabout assembly. It was super fun, it was a super fun way to involve both staff members and students in school spirit, and it was for such a great cause. The LHS debate team commits to community service hours every year. And as a part of that commitment, they have recently made two trips to Feed My Starving Children. All of the team members love these events and having the opportunity to give back to the community. Moving on to sports, Tom Shatamra competed in the powerlifting competition and breaks the American deadlift record by 20 pounds when he successfully lifted 485 pounds in the 13- to 15-year age range. Congrats to him. Ventsing Club members earned honors as a Great Lakes championship. The competition was hosted at Stevenson High School, where 15 schools from the tri-state area were representative. LHS junior Joe Griffith and sophomore Natalie Eisberg placed third in the competition. Congrats to them. In fine arts, we have the Wind Ensemble at CBDNA. They traveled all the, all the way down to Peoria this Friday to compete in this sectional tournament. It was a high honor to be able to perform, but it was very impactful. Junior Marilyn Yu, who plays flute in the conference, said, "It gave me the chance to be in the honors band that was full of the most talented musicians in the state. We played a piece in honor of the 2015 Charleston Black Church shooting, and I cried every time we played it. After we performed it, we got a standing ovation and, because of how powerful it was. The music we made was exceptional, and I won't forget what it felt to be part of such a talented group. Great job to all those who were involved." In the Scholastic Art Awards, we have their very prestigious National Competition for Arts, and so many students at LHS were recognized at a regional level. Eight students received honorable mentions, eight students received silver keys, and five students received gold keys. Paige Vang's artwork was selected as a nominee to the American Vision Award, the highest award, and one of the only five pieces of art selected. The students who received the gold keys are moving on to the next phase of the competition, where they will be judged nationally. Romeo and Juliet was the 14th and 15th of February. The casted and in-school performance for the freshman lit class on Thursday, the 13th. This was a great opportunity for students to see familiar faces in the infamous play as they studied Shakespeare's, Shakespeare's works. The evening shows were also a great success, and the cast and crew pulled off an impeccable performance. There was also an AP art show during the show in the Auditorium Gallery that showed off our incredible AP art students' work during the show each night. People could also try to buy their work by auctioning for it. It's always super impressive to see how talented we have, how talented each student is and how we're so thankful to have them in the art department. The freshman sophomore play, Air Guitar High, was January 31st and February 1st. The show was about an air guitar hot, air guitar competition at a high school where two students decided to make a movie about it. The show went smoothly, and the shows were sold out each night. The show also had a phenomenal bright set that was show-stopping. Congrats to the cast and crew, an amazing show. The cast list for the spring play, Peter and the Starcatcher, came out last Friday, and the whole cast is super excited to start working on the show. The show is all about the lost boy Peter and a young girl named Molly trying to find stardust. This show is the prequel to Peter Pan. We hope that many people come to the show on April 17th and 18th. In health and wellness, we have Operation Snowball, which was on January 30th at Camp LaCine in Wisconsin. This Day of Extreme Fun is open to all grades, and we partner with Vernon Hills, Barrington, and Barrington for a day of stepping out of your comfort zone, meeting new people, and seeing everyone come together. This event has been going on for so many more, so many years, and will be going on for many more. There was a prevention workshop at the D-128 office where Dr. Nelson brought seven students from LHS to participate in a Leadership in Prevention Workshop hosted by Operation Snowball and the Kenneth Youth Center. It focused on alcohol, tobacco, and drug trends in adolescents. The screening of the movie Screenagers about how digital devices affect teenagers' mental health was shown last Thursday, the 20th, for parents in the studio theater. There was a talkback afterwards where parents could ask questions about the movie. We thank all the amazing parents that came out to see it. Thank you.
Great job. And also highlight for the second consecutive month. So last month, during the Super Bowl, I'm sitting there watching the Super Bowl, and I see LHS on TV. This month, I was out in California visiting my brother, having breakfast in Lake Tahoe, and I have the TV on, and I'm watching the Today Show, and there are the Vernon Hills cheerleaders on TV. So word is out, okay? Great job. All right, Superintendent's Report.
Hey, we're going to continue with some good news. One of the things that I do want to point out is that Tom Shatamra, who won the national powerlifting championship in the 13- to 15-year-old group that students mentioned, broke the national record by 20 pounds. So pretty terrific performance by a young powerlifter. So that's just phenomenal, right? So it's like smashing 100 meters by, you know, another half a second. It's pretty amazing. So congratulations to him. Okay, so on February 15th, the D-128 Unified Basketball Teams competed at regionals held at North Boone High School in Papa Grove. Both the Storm Black and the Storm Blue, get it, black and blue, teams made it to the finals and played to see who would represent D-128 at state. Final score, Storm Black, 37, Storm Blue, 27. Storm Black is our regional champion, Storm Blue is our regional runner-up, and once again, D-128 is state-bound in basketball. D-128 Special Olympians Nathan Farrar and Joseph Mahler earned gold at the Illinois State Winter Games in Galena on February 5th. Nathan earned gold in the 200 meter, and Joseph Mahler earned gold in the 50 meter in snowshoeing. Excuse me, the LHS WISE team, Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering, team placed third in the Illinois Academic Challenge Regional Competition at the College of Lake County on February 6th. Individual medalists were Samantha Fan, physics, third place; John He, math, first place; Sebastian Angino, computer science, first place. John and Sebastian advanced to sectional competition, which will be held on March 13th. Big news from D-128 math teams. LHS and VHS finished in the top two spots at the regional math competition, which was held February 22nd at Stevenson High School. The VHS math team took second place at the competition. Eric Bamer tied for first place in Algebra I. Tyler Tran and Rahul Gupta won first place for junior-senior two-person competition. Anna Rune Adaraju, Lisa Bamer, Tanee Sharma, Itamar Shifrin, and Eric Song also placed first in calculator team competition. Individual regional champions included Belinda Lee, Audrey Wedick, Sean Hoak, Nicole Patel, Desi Nenyar, Dylan Trout, and president John He. In written competitions, first-place team honors were achieved by Algebra I teams, Sean Hawk, Sam Lee, Belinda, Sam Lamb, Belinda Lee, Omar Mahmoud, Audrey Wedick, Jiang Stanley Ju. And the geometry team, Olivia Duffy, George Huber, Emma Mascato, Molly Mascato, Nikhil Patel, Tavish Sharma. In addition, the Algebra II team, Allison Chu, Sebastian Angino, Desi Nenyar, Liam Tucker, Richard Zhao, and Divashish Kabitar. And the pre-calculus team of Daniel, Daniel Shamon, Samantha Fan, John He, Nathan John, Dylan Trout, and Jack Stavrakos brought home second-place trophies. Other team events bringing home first-place honors were the freshman sophomore Person 18, Sean Hoak, Sam Lamb, Belinda Lee, Rebecca Shi, Olivia Duffy, Emma Mascato, Molly Mascato, and Nikhil Patel. The freshman sophomore two-person team, Belinda Lee and Nikhil Patel. And the orals team, Desi Nenyar and Dylan Trout. Both LHS and VHS will move on to the state math meet at the University of Illinois on May 2nd. And I would just point out once again that both LHS and VHS have substantial histories as top state math teams over the course of a number of years. So it's, this is always an exciting time of year for them. VHS junior Timothy Zheng was selected to work with Frank Rosenwine, principal oboe with the Cleveland Orchestra at a masterclass hosted by the Elgin Symphony Orchestra held on February 8th in Elgin. VHS 2019 band alum Bobby Black recently won the principal tuba position in the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, 19 years old. Amazing. Pat, what do you always say about kids in school today? It's just, it's astounding. "We are passionate about breaking barriers and unifying youth from different cultures as part of our district steering mission." This fall, 11 VHS art students in Allison Malloy's AP portfolio and drawing and painting studio classes put their passion and artistic skills into rendering portraits for children in Malaysia as part of the Memory Project. Over the past decade, more than 150,000 people from ethnic and religious minorities have landed in Malaysia with hopes of escaping violence and persecution. They have found safety there, but there is a catch. In Malaysia, they do not have legal rights. They earn money for food in any way they can, living in impoverished pockets of large cities, but their children are not entitled to education or healthcare. Through a partnership with the Memory Project, who is paired with a charity that runs a school for these children, we aim to offer these children both education and hope. VHS students participated in creating these portraits as an outreach to offer these children kindness, respect, encouragement, and joy. The best student artists from approximately 100-plus Illinois high schools will converge to showcase their art invite for more than $88 million in scholarships offered at the 8th Annual Illinois School Art Exhibition, IHSAE. LHS seniors Kelsey Collins, Mary Wetterling, and Bridget Wilson have received over $600,000 in scholarship offers, with more scholarships still being processed as of press time. Kelsey, Mary, and Bridget will have their artwork displayed at the Senior Portfolio Show. Kelsey, Mary, Avery Vang, Rachel Bond, and Alyssa Wells will also have the honor of their artwork displayed at the General Exhibition Show as part of the Illinois High School Art Exhibition. The art show runs from Monday, March 2nd through April 4th at the Bridgeport Art Center in Chicago's own Bridgeport neighborhood. As part of the general exhibition, Mary Wetterling has the opportunity during the opening of the show on Sunday, March 8th, to participate in the art throwdown. She will compete with more than 30 other high school artists throughout Northern Illinois in a figure drawing contest for awards and the prestige of competing against other peers around the state. The District 128 Special Olympic Swim Team, Libertyville Stars, hosted its first disability swim meet at LHS yesterday. 70 athletes from six teams competed in the inaugural Reach for the Stars meet. The Libertyville Stars Swim Club is celebrating its 20th season as a team. The club currently has 31 athletes ages 13 through 49-years-old who come from all over Lake County. The team also has nearly as many high school volunteer coaches who are themselves competitive swimmers. The high school volunteers swim with club and high school teams in Lake County, including LHS, VHS, Mundeline, Warren, and Highland Park High Schools. The Stars meet weekly at LHS for Sunday practices and attend numerous swim meets throughout the year, culminating in the Illinois State Special Olympics Summer Games in Normal, Illinois. Thanks to all of the volunteer coaches, students, and head coaches, and founder of the club, Becky Peacock, for making this event possible for the athletes. And finally, good news. On behalf of the District 128 Foundation for Learning, thanks to everyone who made the foundation's inaugural 128 Day of Giving, or 128 Day of Giving, a rousing success. The One Day Social Media Campaign raised an additional $6,540 that will support our students in need and our Daring Innovation Grants Program. So thanks to everybody for, for making that roll and everybody who worked on that project, including Diane Phillips and Mary and all the folks on our foundation. So congratulations to everyone. Okay, next on the Superintendent's Report tonight is any capital updates that we might have. Mark on our major capital projects.
Thank you, Prentice. Things are moving forward at both schools with our capital projects. Here at Vernon Hills, in the classroom area, the interior masonry, masonry is complete for the walls for the classrooms. And we're moving forward with, still working on MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing in that section of the building. In the cafeteria expansion, we're prepping for spring break work. And they've got ear barrier up on the exterior wall, and we will be doing some, the exterior finished masonry, starting that here. Over on the gym addition, the north wall is almost fully completed, and they're working, prepping in the area in between the gym wall and the locker room addition. Prepping everything for us to be steel and installed. So we'll sequence a steel installation, and in the next few weeks, we'll start to see steel go in. Over at Libertyville, we did a walkthrough at our, at our last meeting and saw finishes. Suspended ceiling work is in, lighting is in, we've got paint going on. A lot of the interior finishes are moving forward, working on floor installation upstairs and downstairs in the middle of next month. So things are progressing really well over at Libertyville.
Any additional questions from the board on that? Okay, Mark, thank you. Next on the Superintendent's Report is Governor's Budget Address and Illinois Spring Legislative Session, and these two items hang together. The governor gave his budget address and gave some good attention to public education and also reinforced that the state, over a long period of time, has finally redone the school funding formula, the evidence-based funding formula. And in his budget, he allocated a number of dollars that were, or have been targeted for future years to ensure that the evidence-based funding formula grows. The one wrinkle is he tied some of that money to passage of the graduated income tax. It's a constitutional amendment in the fall. And so as we've had conversations with our local legislators here, we have certainly let them know that it's critical that we maintain that funding schedule. And it requires 350 or 400 million additional dollars a year to ramp up, I think, to 2025, to get us a level that I think we can be more proud of than what we've been doing over the last few years. So our state legislators, I think, understand clearly that some of that money in the budget can be moved around to ensure that the funding for public education continues. Because if we can't fund the evidence-based formula, then looking at broader issues like property tax reform and relief and some of those things, which are going to require additional dollars so schools are not hurt, is going to be very challenging. So the governor is very pro-public education, and I'm sure the legislators and the governor will have successful conversations to make sure that adequate funding goes into the evidence-based formula. In addition to that, as we've noted a couple of times, you just want to keep these on the front burner as the spring session starts to move along. But there are several issues that are directly related to schools and/or school funding. So first would be property tax relief and reform. Also, PTEL, which is better known to the public as Tax Caps Reform, TIF Reform, so incremental taxing districts, and school consolidation. And as the governor and legislators work to seek some property tax relief and reform, a mix of these tools are going to have to come into that. I think our legislators clearly understand, and legislators across the state, that if they do a hard property tax freeze, that's going to have a catastrophic effect on public schools. So while everyone is very supportive, of course, of property tax reform and relief, including this board and previous boards, that has to be balanced to ensure that the public schools are not going to have a catastrophe as a result for that. And it's going to require additional funding, additional funding from the state. So we just want to make sure that we keep those issues on a kind of a high level and certainly certainly keep the board informed and knowledgeable. And then now that they're into the spring session filing a budget, Governor's Budget Address, there will be more to update the board on and discuss with the board in the near future, I'm sure. Okay? Next thing we have, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So if it's, or if you happen to know off the top of your head, I'm just out of curiosity, what's the evidence-based formula, like roughly, like what is that evidence referring to?
Dan, you want to tackle that?
Evidence-based forming, evidence-based funding, sorry. I can explain it, but I can't remember the word. That is, that's really what the state and the legislation has decided to call the way that they're going to fund schools. So before, it used to be called general sedate. Now they're calling it evidence-based funding. And the reason why they're doing that is how they just, how they used to decide how to split, based, how to split funding with schools is based on a cert, every kid should get an X-dollar amount. The number was $6,119. They thought every kid should have that number. Good question is why that number, but that's what they said, why that number. Then, then the neck, then the way they did it next, and they, they said, they asked the communities in their formula, it's a math equation that figures it out, but the, the next thing it does is it asks, how much can you generate locally in property taxes? Is it easy for you to do that, or is it hard? If it's easier for you to do that, they'll say, okay, you do that, and then we'll give you $218 per kid. If it's hard for you to do that, then depending on how hard it is, they can give you potentially up to the $6,119 per kid. But it was totally based on just a body, nothing related to what that student may or may not need. The new evidence-based funding is designed to, again, develop a, a dollar amount, so when the 6119, that was per kid, if you have 3,400 kids, they would say, this is how much money you need. They do the same thing now with evidence-based funding, but there's no longer a per-student generically-assigned number. Instead of what it is, is they use research-based numbers that have shown for X-number of kids, you should have this many principals, and a principal costs about this much money, so that they put that as how much you need. For every, every elementary school or student, for a student ratio for nurses or something like that, they have a lot of ratios in there that figure this out. And, and the idea is how they came up with that number is usually based on research that they have, there's usually research that is backed up saying, this is a number that's appropriate for the school. So for example, in an elementary building, if you had, for every 450 kids, you should have an assistant principal. They have all that kind of thing. So it factors into all these positions you end up needing to support the students. So it takes into account the needs of the students. So if you have students with higher, higher needs in terms of maybe their low-income or their English learners, a variety of factors that they take into account, they, they provide more funding into that. So it's more tailored to the needs of the particular district. So when they say evidence-based, that it, it's factors to take into account to fund the students relative to the students' needs, backed by research.
And, and for us, it, it hasn't resulted in a great change, because we are considered to be a property tax-rich district because of the breadth and depth of our tax base here. We have traditionally not gotten very much money from the state of Illinois. The evidence-based funding formula has, has not changed that picture for us. Who it has helped, and if you look at North Chicago, or you look at Waukegan, both who have struggled financially, they get some vast sums of money to be able to invest into education of the kids in those districts. And that was the impetus behind it before, and the former formula was 17-years-old, and it did, it just didn't work anymore. The calculation, the number they had come up with was a number from years and years and years ago that was occasionally adjusted, that wasn't anyplace close to a per-student need for kids. So EBF is what you'll see, like in a newspaper, evidence-based funding, and then there's a formula behind it. Okay? All right, great. Dan, thank you, that was a great explanation. That was a great review for all of us. Next thing on the superintendent's agenda tonight is donation acknowledgement, and we want to acknowledge from Mr. Edmund O. Schweitzer III, President and Chief Technical Officer of Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories Incorporated in Pullman, Washington, one acknowledged receipt of his corporate gift of $100 for support of our math and science departments. Our math and science teachers at Vernon Hills High School appreciate Mr. Schweitzer's support of our program and the future of our students. So it's great, it's really wonderful. Okay, and I think we had one tonight, and then we had five FOIA requests, so as required, I will read those into the record at this time. FOIA request was received on 1/28/2020. Response deadline was 2/4/2020. Requester was Russell Lisaw, reporter with the Daily Herald. Information requested, proposed new or amended contracts between LHS and VHHS with Coca-Cola. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley. Request was fulfilled and response was sent on 1/28/2020. Time spent, Dan reports a few minutes. So it was one of our lighter requests. All right, FOIA request received 1/30/2020. Response deadline was 2/6/2020. Requester was Katie Kim, an NBC5 reporter. Ms. Kim requested any and all written agreements and/or contracts between Community High School District 128 and companies that provide content filtering and monitoring software for school district-related issued devices for students, including but not limited to Bark, Securely, Go, Guardian, et cetera, and documents sufficient to show policies and guidelines for school district-issued devices for students. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley. Request was fulfilled and sent on 2/6/2020, and the time spent was 30 minutes. And by the way, we use Securely here, and we're very, we, we believe that we continue to be on the cutting edge of school security. So it's actually a very good question that we received earlier today. So FOIA request 2/5/2020. Response deadline is 2/12/2020. Requester, requestor was the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, freedom@irtaonline.org. Information requested, please provide the name and email address of any certified staff, teachers, administrators, nurses, counselors, et cetera, who are retiring this year. Follow-up is done by Brian Kelly. Fulfilled and response sent on 2/6/2020. Time spent, a few minutes. Next request was from Iris Martinez of Austin, Texas. Iris requested, "At an opportunity to obtain copies of public records that are outlined below, and please organize this information in the following manner: First name, middle name, last name, position, grade level for teachers, subject area taught for teachers, certified in area of instruction for teachers, school email, personal email, phone, race, ethnicity, hire date, years of experience, current salary." I'm requesting that the information be delivered, if possible, in an Excel spreadsheet or original PDF report containing this information above for every teacher and staff member, employee currently employed in CHSD 128. Follow-up is done by Brian Kelly. Request was not fulfilled, clarification email was undeliverable as of 2013, 2013/20. Time spent, 30 minutes. FOIA commercial request received 2/12/2020. Response deadline is 3/12/2020. Requester, Star Hayes, Hello College, One Mid-America Plaza in Oak Brook Terrace. Information requested, student directory information for all 8th through 11th graders within your school district. I would appreciate an electronic Excel copy of this information with the following data points: parent student name, parent email address, parent student mailing address, including street address, city, state, and zip, student grade level, school of enrollment. Follow-up is done by Brian Kelly. Request was denied on 2/13/2020. Time spent, a few minutes. And of course, we are very careful about the release of private data, and if there's any question, Brian's working with Lynn or John Fester at Scariano. So we just want to reinforce that for parents and students at home, as well as our staff internally in the district. So any questions on the FOIAs? Thank you, everybody, for reporting. And then, Pat, the last thing tonight is just a reminder for the board that our March committee meetings, we're going to have here at Vernon Hills, so we can tour the work that's been done to date. And I can predict that it's going to be really nice weather outside, and so, but it's a lot further along than the last time we had to look out the window at the construction. So I think it'll be real exciting to see, you know, additional steps that have been taken here and that you hear Mark, John talk about a lot. So we'll have the committee meetings here, we'll make sure that, you know, Carol corrects that and puts that out on all of our documents, and I'll send you a reminder to remind me as well, when I do that, that we're going to be meeting over here, not at LHS. So Pat?
That's it.
That's the end of the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. All right, the consent vote agenda is listed. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call, please.
Tom Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Chairperson Batson.
Okay. We have a group of board policies. This is the second reading for the board policies. We've gone over these both in multiple committee meetings and at the last board meeting, so we just need a, a motion and a second and an approval to put these policies in place. So anybody want to take a motion?
I'm moved to approve the board policy, second reading and adoption.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Nope, okay. Roll call, please.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We have a handful of employment actions here to take. These were things that came in after the, the committee meeting, and so we're not included on the consent agenda, so we can have a motion and a second for these.
I motion to accept the employment of employees as listed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Nope, roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and that concludes the Program and Personnel.
Okay, thank you. Facilities and Finance, approval of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And you just want to summarize that real quick. Yeah, that is our financial report for fiscal year 19 that we discussed in committee later than we would normally have had it, but it includes a comprehensive look. We'd able to incorporate our daring mission and information in there as well. So I'd encourage anyone here, and particularly anyone in the community, to read, probably starting with the management discussion analysis that we write, to really try to walk through and explain the basics of what, what's happening in this district from a financial perspective. We did have two restatements that I mentioned at the committee, but I'll mention again, one was for capital assets, that we, I think we have a better-aligned capital assets now, and two, private purpose trust funds that were used years ago to raise money for the TERFs that are in place now. Those monies were never transferred out to basically pay the district back for doing that, but my argument was, those were clearly done long ago. So we've made those corrections, and I, I think these are the most accurate statements we've had yet. Great.
Pat, one, one question, just really for the community. Dan, we're not required to do the CAFR, right? This is, this is like over and above, this is like the gold standard, right?
Correct. This is the highest standard that a government body can, can report on. All we're required to do is to have an audit and file an annual financial report with the state. So we do the, we do the audit, we file the annual financial report with the state, and then on top of that, we do the CAFR. So the CAFR is this big, whole, long thing. If we just did an audit, it would be a much shorter audit, maybe 40 to 50 pages-ish, something like that. Would have some similar information, but there's a comprehensiveness to, that's, that's the name. There's a, there's, it's very comprehensive in terms of, if you read this, you would have a very, very good idea about what this district is and what's going on.
The goals, the strategies, and all those good.
And a lot of, lot of numbers, and long-term numbers, demographics, all kinds of information in terms of our, our taxing district, our, our highest taxpayers, our employers in the area. There's a lot of information in there that goes into that. And so there's, there's a number of districts that do this, but not, not, not as many as maybe you would think that do this. But this has been a longstanding thing here, and it's a, it's a good thing to do, for sure. Great, thanks.
Can I point out something on page 10? Because this is an award-winning document. The Strategic Plan Initiatives, under the Achievement Initiative, the second bullet, "Collect, Analyze, and Improve Student Performance," there's a syntax error, because we're not collecting performance, we're collecting and analyzing data about student performance. I realize this is probably a copy and paste from our D128 Strategic Plan. Do you? I'm on page 10?
Like page 10 of the, that says 10 at the bottom of the page?
Uh, pa, no, I'm sorry.
10 of 186?
On your little scrolling bar at the bottom, it's page 10 away.
Which bullet point? Page 10 of 186, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Yes, 10 of 186. So if you go to the D128 Strategic Plan Initiative, the second bullet under Achievement Initiative, "Collect, Analyze, and Improve Student Performance," we're not collecting performance, we're collecting and analyzing data. So...
But we're improving student performance. Does it say improve?
It says, "Collect, Analyze, and Improve Student Performance."
As a result of the data.
Yeah. So we just, I think it's missing a word, just to make it crystal clear.
Sure.
Yeah.
Have you proofread all my stuff?
Hey. That's good.
Certainly, it's not the point of the document, but...
She's not the page.
I don't know what I could, I don't know. Right, as soon as I found something, I'm like...
Impressive, yeah. You did your job.
That exact wording has been there since, since at least 2013?
I'm sure it has.
It won't be there now?
Previous words notwithstanding. It's a...
Yes, it was, the statement was designed to collect the data, analyze the data, and use it to improve student performance. It's the essence of the statement, so.
So the request will be to change that for future revisions, correct?
Okay.
Right. Because this is done.
Perhaps an area for...
It is understood.
Perhaps an area for future refinement.
That's good.
All right. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the CAFR as submitted?
I'm moved to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Hessel?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Change order for the pool, Mr. Koopman. Oh, Mr. Stanley? Yeah, we, yeah. There are two change orders here, so the first one, make sure.
IS 00062.
62, so this is work, these are both for the LHS pool. This was work that was a change that was done and recommended by Siemens to change. The, the plan was to have wireless access control in the doors. The doors that are facing the pool, the recommendation was to change those to wired due to the harsh environment of the pool, and both wired or wireless are still exposed to harsh conditions, and they'll likely fail in the future. It's significantly more expensive to replace the wireless system than it is to replace the wired system. So the recommendation was to change to the wired system for those interior doors, which cost more upfront, but the idea is it'll save you in the long term.
Last longer for replacement.
Not necessarily, maybe they'll last longer, but if you need to replace them, it's much, much, much cheaper to replace them. Okay, and that is in the amount of how much? $51,257. It technically is a, it's a charge of $65,557 to, to Peaper, who's the electrical contractor, and we get a credit back from the other contractor. So is the motion then to approve the change order in the amount of $51,200, or is it in the total amount? $51,257. All right, so is there a motion to approve LHS pool change order, IS 00062, in the amount of $51,267? 57? 57.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel? Hessel?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And the second one?
Second one is change order OS-04. This was additional cost, so back in December of 2018, there was anticipated winter conditions. The board approved a change order in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the winter conditions for the materials and the fuel. This is above and beyond that as, that we got from Stuki, who provided the propane fuel. The original idea was in the construction project that the, the masonry would have been done in the fall, but the start of our project got delayed. And so that pushed that work into the winter, which required winter conditions that were way above and beyond what were contained in their bids, because it wasn't really anticipated that the masonry would have to be done during the wintertime. So that had an impact additionally. We were anticipating to be connected to our school's natural gas line, but that wasn't able to happen until the spring of 19. And so they had to basically go most of the win, most or all of the winter getting propane fueled. So they knew that it was going to be additional. Once they had gotten the bills from Stuki in the fall, they realized the extent of it was more than they were anticipating. And so this requires an additional change order for the, for the propane fuel.
So we approve seventy-five thousand. This is seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five on top of that seventy-five thousand.
Correct.
Got it.
And the original seventy-five was for what?
For winter conditions as well. So that was for...
Did that include all of the, the tenting part?
Tenting and, and the rental of the equipment. This was the fuel to fuel it. So now we're, we were experiencing some winter conditions here, like tenting and, and the equipment, but they can connect to our natural gas line. So there will be, there would be no fuel cost associated with that.
And what is the short version of why this fuel was used a year ago and we're only paying for it now? Is that what you were trying to tell me before the meeting?
Short version is, short version is Gilbane got it in the fall from the contractor.
They got the bill from Stuki in the fall.
They got it from the contract in the fall. They gave it to me in December. We spent the last month or so talking through it and I felt ready to bring it to you now.
Okay, so we're sure that it's legit, though?
Yes. Unfortunately.
No, I understand what it's for. I'm just like blown away that this was a year ago and somehow, I don't know, I guess Stuki must be flush with cash or something. They didn't need money, so I guess.
We're on the same page.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that amount again is seventy-seven thousand and...
One hundred and twenty-five.
One twenty-five. All right, so is there a motion to approve the LHS pool change order OS-00004 in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Nope, roll call, please.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Lunsted?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Vernon Hills Intercom System. Big ticket.
Yeah, this is, we discussed in committee, part of IT, our technology department's budget is, is for capital improvements. This is one such improvement that is part of their budget. However, I don't want, I did not want to go through just the budget process to, and then just say, surprise, we spent two hundred grand on this project. So we brought it up for you at committee meeting. Mick and Bo were there to explain the intercom system here and, and their process for going through that. And I'm just scrolling through all of these bills from the gas to get to the next thing. Whatever page it's on, I'm going to keep scrolling. And it's for approval of the intercom. So they're, they're buying the equipment now, this fiscal year, and then they will be buying the wiring for the, the work for that in fiscal year 21, which is next fiscal year. All the work to be done this summer.
I'm still scrolling through invoices.
Forty-one, six, twenty-five.
Thank you. I'm trying to find that proposal.
It's in there. Yeah, I know it's in there.
Yeah. It's a separate document.
Simon Incorporated?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Simon, sorry, around three hundred and eighty pages. Oh, here we go, I got it. Forgive me, sorry. Just trying to scroll through to get ready for this. Yeah, for Simon Incorporated to provide the equipment is two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a lot of money to just spend. That's, so, want you to be clear and for everyone else to be clear, this is something that's exempt from the bidding requirements to spend this because it's, technology is, is a specific exclusion in that law because it's a, it's an extremely specialized system. The, the company that they're brought in spent a lot of time in the building getting to know this, to be able to put this proposal together. So that, that's the proposal for that, that we're asking for approval. And they'll, and the, the information here for the, the wiring stuff, that's more FYI, that's not what we're asking for approval. It's really approval to buy that equipment.
What's the total cost of the intercom system change?
Uh, would be those two numbers together, so...
So just want to make sure we're there on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Almost four hundred thousand dollars, right?
Twenty-year-old system. It's antiquated.
Yeah, but it's, it's with, I mean, it's in their budget, you know, but yeah, for sure.
Okay, so tonight we need the, the motion for the two forty-one, six, twenty-five?
Yes.
All right, so our motion to approve the upgrades to the Vernon Hills Intercom system in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
You can, you can first.
Any further discussion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Lunsted?
Aye.
Rooney? Aye.
All right, motion carries. LHS Masonry.
This one's pretty quick, just, I mean, is it normal routine tuck pointing type stuff?
Uh, next phase in our tuck pointing for Libertyville High School. We went out to bid for that. We had seven contractors attend the pre-bid conference and we received six bids back. Our consultant went over the low bid and confirmed that contractor was meeting all specifications. And the low, uh, low bidder was Midwest Pressure Washing and Restoration Incorporated, DBA Restore Works Masonry Restoration. A base bid of three hundred and sixty-five thousand and an alternate add of twenty thousand. Total base bid was for three hundred and eighty-five thousand. As part of the, the part of that, a lot, there's a fifty thousand dollar allowance in there for contingency. So if we don't spend that money, we will get that back. And there's also material allowance, thirty thousand.
These are shockingly different, actually.
Right, I was just going to ask that. What, we're, we're confident that these are all bidding on the same thing? I mean, there, there's...
Yes, yes.
One of them's for six hundred, one of them's for, that just seems like a big variance in the, the bid numbers we received. Is that a normal occurrence?
Exactly, that can swing.
It's a disruption.
Yeah, between the two.
It's why we insist on multiple bids on these projects.
Grove, Grove we use a lot. So Grove would probably, like, has gotten a lot of these bids lately. If you look at their number, I mean, it's...
It's closer to the...
Much closer.
It's much closer to the base bid. There was a thirty, basically about thirty thousand in, in the base bid. So we asked for approval for...
So we're approving the bid and the alternate, is that correct?
Bid and the alternate, yes.
All right, so it's in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Three hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Yep. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the bid award to Restore Works for LHS Exeter Masonry remediation in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Rudy, not Rooney.
We'll have control of it.
Hessel? Aye.
Lunsted?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Let me just back up to the, the intercom system. Why are we not approving the one twelve, four, fifty-three?
For next year. It'll be next year. Buying the parts this year and we're going to...
Oh, I see, got it.
Next year.
Just want to be clear, thank you.
So we'll save a little money.
Yep. And we just move the money out to next year, right?
Yeah, yeah. Leverage, leverage efficiencies.
Okay.
Pat, before you move on to the next session, I, I just want to note something again. I think that's, want to compliment the board and previous boards here working with us together. You've read in the newspaper over the last six months to a year that there are several really high-profile unit or high school districts in the Chicago area that have run into significant problems because they have not kept up with maintenance, ongoing maintenance. And a priority of ours, the whole time Karen and Pat, that we've been together on the board, has been working with Alex Delapoli when he was on the board, was to do preventative maintenance on the front side. And so we allocate three to six million dollars a year to do things like tuck pointing and other things to stay on top of that. And the result of being able to do that is we're not looking at having to run a referendum to fund part of basic maintenance in the district. And that's a great thing for taxpayers here. And it takes some patience and some vigilance and it's easy maybe to get off course of doing that. But I think working together, we've done a terrific job of that. And the result is that we don't have to go out and have part of a referendum funded to do regular maintenance, replacing roofs and tuck pointing and, and things that if you don't take care of can really cause some great damage in the building. So...
And we see neighboring districts have to do exactly that because...
That's, that's...
That's, that's very true. So, and that's something that the community may not always know, so I want to say that again. We used to talk about that a lot more, but that's a priority of ours. It will continue to be a priority of ours. So we said, save significant tax dollars someplace down the road. We can use the existing resources more directly towards our kids, right, at the end of the day. So thank you to this board. Thank you to our previous boards. Thank you to Alex, who really came in when he came on the board with his expertise working at, at Abbott and really kind of started nudging us down that path. And I think we've all been true believers to that, really path. And I think it's paid, it's, it's paid big results for the district. So anyway, thank all of you very much.
Okay. I still would like to review that capital plan. We haven't done it. I haven't pushed because we've got so many different things going on, but maybe you two guys could chat. Well, here's what I'd ask. If you two guys could chat, given all that's going on, let's pick a reasonable time where we say, you know what, by here we'll be ready and by here we'll do it. I'd like to go back and look at what Alex had prepared to see where we're at relative to that in terms of format and scope and all that kind of stuff. Because I, I still sometimes think these projects surprise me. Not that they're not worth doing. I'm glad we're doing them, but, and maybe I'm not paying attention to some of them, but I, I'd really like to see a list of, here's all the stuff we've identified. It's roof, it's tuck pointing, it's sidewalks, it's all those things we know we got to do over the next five years and they just keep rolling. And then there's these other special projects because stuff's getting old, okay? And then there's probably another line that says unidentified, which takes us to some reasonable amount of money we're going to spend every year. And then we can just keep checking in and saying, where are we at relative to that, okay? I don't think we have it ticked and tied quite as well as we have before because we had so many other projects going. I get that, okay? I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, but where my head's at is a year from now, I want to make sure we got it in place, okay? God forbid someone else comes in and says, no, they don't even have that stuff, all right?
Well, I would say that's a good target for us. And just to, again, echo your comments, I think we're going to have to get a little further along in our major capital projects before we're actually going to be able to spend some more substantive time with that because there's only one Mark.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Okay, and we are, you know, he's doing everything over and above his job on the capital project. So I think a year from now is a great target.
Well, or even if we could roll it into this year's, you know, some portion of that in this year's budget discussion, let me make a, if we only have the next two or three years that we can say this is reasonably good, okay, this is what the next two or three years look. And then, so you got a bigger, I'll call it unidentified list in years four and five, okay, fine. And we'll, and we'll continue to build that. But it'd be good to just kind of look at, well, this is the list of stuff we know we're going to do. And then just plug a whole, you know, put in a, a plug for the unidentified and say, we're going to spend on average five million a year for the next five years. And, you know, we got three million identified next year, two million a year after that, one million after that. The rest of it's the unidentified. We'll deal with it from there. I just think it would give us all a much better visibility to where we're at because it's hard to keep track. I've always had trouble keeping track of this. I mean, I always wish I could go to my book and look and just check it off my list and say, oh, no, this one's a new one. Where, oh, that's an unidentified, unidentified, okay? I think that would just be helpful.
To some extent, don't we already have that? Like, we have a roof schedule, we have a fan schedule.
We have something that's reasonably good, and that's what I'm saying. But, but I want to make sure it's up to date.
All right.
Okay, because what happens is these things get out, they get out of date because they're not top of mind when you're building gyms and building pools. And if you got to make a call on where you're spending your day, you know where I'd tell you to spend the day. All right, build the pool, build the gym, because we got kids coming, we can't be late. But every year, my experience is, even if this, every year there was some reason why we couldn't get to it. And then four or five years later, you look and say, oh my, that thing we had once upon a time is really good. It's so, so out of date now, we don't really even have it, okay? And I think we all want to make sure we get that, okay? All right. What, we got one more roofing?
Yep.
These are perennial, tuck pointing roofing.
Tuck pointing roofing.
I remember the days when I used to say, Mark, when are we going to be done with that? And Mark would usually pretty much say, well, when we're done, we're going to start all over.
Going to get around the building and start again.
We haven't done a couple of roofs at Libertyville in a couple of years. We're back to doing a few this year. We went out to bid for roofing projects at Libertyville High School. And as part of it, two of the major roofs that we're doing, we are going to, part of the bid spec is to make them solar ready. So we will have a box in place so you don't have to later tear out a roof section because they're layered. It's a, for long-term maintenance on it, if you install it, as you're installing the roof, is the best time to do it. The cost is minimal. So we're working, working with that as part of two of these larger roof projects. So we went out to bid for the roofing. We referred roofing was low bid at five hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred dollars is the base bid. As part of the base bid, we had a fifty, fifty thousand dollar allowance in there, a monetary allowance. And we have a material contingency allowance equal to nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in that bid.
Did we use these guys? I don't remember.
Same trade that's doing, that has done both the pool and the current project. So they're, they're doing all of our...
None of them are leaking.
None of them are leaking. And they, and they've done several of the other projects in the past.
Is there a contingency for fluctuations in the price of steel? Or just the contingency?
This is just membranes.
Oh, the allowance?
Yeah.
Uh, the allowance is, is, is for, yeah, any material things or, or any unforeseen conditions that we, that come into play.
And roughly what area of the building is this going to be?
Uh, the area over the auto shop area. There was an addition, last addition on the industrial arts wing. So there's a section of roof there. That's the old gravel tar base roof. And then the other section is where the new pool connects, that, that additional hallway connection, the roof above that.
The greenhouse.
There's a green, there's a greenhouse.
The greenhouse, yeah.
Yeah, there was a greenhouse there, which is leaking. That, we put that as part of this project. We're going to brick that in. It's a small room at maybe six by ten, six by twelve is not really useful for a greenhouse, so it'll end up being a storage. So we will brick that up, have a steel roof put in and then connect it to roof number nine in that area.
And there's a few little...
Then we have some canopy, canopies. I believe there's four canopies that we're doing that are...
Overhays?
Overhays, overdoors.
High doors, yeah.
Small ones. So there's two large roof areas and then a few small ones, small canopy areas. We had two bidders. We're just, just over four thousand dollars difference in, in two bids.
Will these projects all get done this year, this fiscal year?
Uh, different next, next fiscal year.
These are, these two are for fiscal year 21.
Is that how they were planned? Is that how they were planned?
Yeah, so at our committee, we had our, we showed our preliminary capital list for fiscal, for summer, which is fiscal year twenty-one. This is on there. This is also the project that we have applied for the state maintenance grant to get fifty thousand dollars back from that.
Okay. All right, so it's, it's planned for next year, that's fine. All right, is there a motion to approve the bid award to... Fitzford Company for LHS Roofing in the amount of five hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Backson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye. Okay. Any other, other? I don't have any. No? Okay, no, so you don't know ISP, so that's it?
Yeah, one quick ISP. Actually, a couple quick. Everyone got a copy of this in your book, so this is just the culmination of all the, the things that we voted on that I represented to you guys on, in November, so if you have any insomnia, you can read through those and...
I got one in the mail today, too.
Yes, so did I.
Yeah.
So that's that. And then just a reminder, and, and this will happen actually after next month's board meeting, but the National School Board Conference is in Chicago this year, so I will be attending and representing District 128 there, April third through April sixth. It's over the weekend, so if anyone else cares to go, I'm sure that we could still get some other people.
If you have any interest in attending one day, half a day, any days, just let us know and we'll, we'll help you register and all of that. It's been...
Is it similar to the Illinois Conference where there's breakout sessions and you can defend conquer and...
Similar format, yeah. It's, it's, yeah, but it's a national. It's not always here, and in fact, I have never been to the national, and since it's in Chicago, that saves travel expenses and things, so.
Been about twelve years since it's been in Chi, you know, when we, it was in Chicago the last time, after Hurricane Katrina. It was supposed to be in New Orleans that year, and they moved it up to Chicago because obviously they couldn't have stuff. So, you know, it's just a good opportunity without a lot of travel, time and travel cost. If you're interested, then, you know, let us know and we'll figure out how to get you registered, all right? No obligation, of course.